We'll call the city council work session order.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder. Whitman.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Here.
Lomore.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
So, this is our work session. We have several items and at this point we usually give it right to the city manager. I know that he has somebody's gonna help with our introductions to get us started on the first couple topics. Mr. Passu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna have Mr. Cochran do the introduction for our first two items with your team coming here.
Right, and guys, just as a heads up for councils as well, as we talked through that here yesterday and today, you would've seen that as a presentation at the city council meeting. This schedule fit better for all, so we're really glad to have the students here to hear about the great work they did. Mr. Cochran.
Honorable Mayor, Council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce the Student Advisory Council to give their annual report to city council. As you know, this was a partnership we started last year with Monroe Public Schools to try and engage our community's youth more into city business and developing in the community into somewhere that they're gonna wanna stay, live, work, and play in the future. And so, having their voice has been critically important and we're especially pleased this year that we've expanded it to include Monroe Catholic Elementary Schools as well as SMCC. So, I'm not gonna steal their thunder, but they're here to present on all the activities that they've done this year, everything that they've gone through, and the successes that they've had. So, I'll invite the students up, and I know they've got a PowerPoint that we're gonna go through as well. So, without further ado, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran.
Hi, I'm Andrew Wyden. I'm an eighth grader at Monroe Middle School.
Hi, my name is Caroline Wozniak. I am a sixth grader at Manor Elementary. The Monroe Youth Advisor Council is an organization that works with Mayor Clark, Mr. Cochran, and other city figures.
We've been busy for the past year working on hygiene drives and pop-up Paloozas and other things to help our community and veterans and so on more.
Uh, we did this because we wanted to help the people in our community and make Monroe a better place to live.
Um, we are very excited to share ideas and stuff with you today. Um, we've been working on this since September this year, and we want, plan to work hard for the future of Monroe.
The Monroe Youth Advisor Council is made up of students from fifth to 12th grade who attend Monroe Public Schools, St. Mary's Catholic Central, along with Monroe Catholic Elementary Schools. These students were selected by their administrators and there is forty, and then, sorry, there is twenty-four students in total.
Students traveled to City Hall once a month from their schools to share their thoughts and concerns with Mayor Clark and Mr. Cochran.
So, when we first came together, we all had a lot of different ideas of what we felt would be good for the youth in our community, but we ended up narrowing it down to just a few. Although we decided on a few more projects to do, we also wanted to do so much more in our community, like help the environment, do more with veterans, and interact with the Mall of Monroe.
My name's Kaitlyn Wallace and I am a 10th grader at Monroe High School.
I'm Abby and I'm a ninth grader at Monroe High School.
So, why, we decided on picking our goals by using a dot method and we wrote all of our ideas on papers like that one and put them on the wall and we all put a dot on the one that we wanted to focus on this year. And we picked three, which was our hygiene drive, our mobile food pantry, and the pop-up Palooza. The Monroe Youth Advisory, again this year, partnered with MCLP to do our mobile food pantry at Arborwood South, and it was on April 13th, which was Global Youth Service Day.
We decided to design t-shirts and reusable bags like this one to promote the food pantry. And at the food pantry, we gave out 20,000 pounds of food to 810 people who we could tell were very grateful.
Nice.
Here's some pictures.
Hey, Mark. The microphone's on, right?
Hello, I'm Caitlyn Ferreira, a now 10th grader at SMCC. Another one of the many things we accomplished this year was the personal hygiene drive. We encourage students from all districts to donate unused and unopened items. Then we transported the items to the Monroe County Opportunity Program, or MCLP, for people in need.
Hello, my name's Samuel Bar, a seventh grader at Monroe Middle School. On May 18th, the Pop-up Palooza was an event for people to promote their own custom businesses and items while selling products like food, jewelry, toys, art, and much more. During the event, thirty student and community businesses sold products at St. Mary's Park. To advertise the event, we put signs up in, in different areas of the school and city. The event was successful because of the many people and businesses that attended the event, as well as during Gen E, the Gen E Day, we handed out flyers to kids who had products to sell so they could go sell them at St. Mary's Park. There's some pictures.
Hi, my name is Kylie Hill, graduated senior scholar of Monroe High School. And now that this has been our second year, we have some long-term goals in mind. While our efforts to provide the community with food and hygiene products advance, we hope to see a spark within the community of other independent groups administrating various types of service, such as bringing unwavering support to our shelters. We have a vision to create community cleanup groups in order to keep our city looking pristine, to create support groups and events that bring awareness to mental health, and we also hope to help improve the community centers such as the ALCC and our shelters to give youth in the area a safe place to spend their time. As I move on to under school at Grand Valley State University, I intend to use my community leadership skills evolved here with this council to benefit various clubs, programs, and internships I might use for my medical school resume in the future. It is important for the voices and talents of the youth to be put to use because as the new generation, we are the future. We would have never gotten this opportunity if it weren't for the help of Mayor Clark, Mr. Mark Cochran, adult city leaders, and other leaders, leading service groups in Monroe. So, thank you so much for all that you guys do. We look forward to accomplishing our goals in the future with years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't, don't all you run away yet because council may have some questions. I, I know Mark's probably gonna come back up too, but it's, it's been a great, successful year. I think back to the original discussions, just like we had a year previous, and the multitude of ideas that you put on the wall, on those paper, hanging in paper there on the wall, but it talked about really some significant issues. And I, I think about the hygiene drive, and I just wanna make a comment to that because hygiene products are very expensive, and there's those that have a difficult challenge in their ability to be able to purchase those. And the first thing they wanna do is make them non-taxable. And I thought, what a great initiative of the youth here to say that there's something that they could change. And so, we talked that through and they learned, in fact, they went and researched and found that it had to be done by the state. Well, at the same time, there was a house bill moving forward, so hygiene products would not be taxable. So, their thought process right, right in line with something that's great for the entire state, not just our community. And I thought that was a great initiative. But yet, they still recognize the need to distribute those items. So, I wanna say thank you for that and the great ideas and a lot of fun it was this past year. I also wanna make a comment. I know that Clerk Treasurer Lavoy was there pretty much at every meeting as well and giving her ideas and helping out. And Ms. Jody Egan, our communications director as well, trying to help out. And of course, the staff from both Monroe Public Schools and Monroe Catholic Central, that was in MCS and their, their assistants. I know Mr., I saw him. He's in the back now. So, that's just some brief comments I have. Council may have some as well, and we'll see if Mr. Cochran has something to close with. Thank you. Brian?
Just want to congratulate the schools advisory board on the great work that they've done so far, and I look forward to work with you guys in the future. I can't commend you enough. I was there at the pop-up, pop-up Palooza, and some of the ideas that they came up to, came up with to sell there, those items were, were fantastic. You definitely got some money out of my pocket for some of those items. Trust me, they were, they were great. So, I look forward to you guys doing some more great work, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you for your efforts.
Michelle?
I also want to thank you, and also I think it's great to see the integration between the ages and the different school groups. It's a wonderful thing to see. Thank you for everything that you do.
Those are the comments from council. John?
Uh, yeah, I have a, a comment. Made me a question. Out of the several programs that you initiated this year, which program would you think has the best chance of being carried forward in the next couple of years? If you could pick one of your programs to carry forward for several years, which one would that be?
Um, actually, our food pantry, we continued it on from last year, so we're hoping that we keep doing it.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's a great question. I think one of the items, when you, when you think about the youth coming together in our community, and, and I think this is important for everybody here, but also those that are watching, to recognize, they, they weren't just thinking about what might be a, how do you improve this park or playground or things that they may be thinking in a small sense. They were very, very thoughtful in that process. And one of the things that the last two years that has risen to the top of the discussion was mental health issues within the school. And, and so I think that's an idea that's still kinda percolating there for council, and I thought about how we, how, what their ideas were. And, and I think if I recall back when the sheet that was hanging on, on the wall, there was about, how do we have a place after the school day and before they get home that there might be an opportunity for youth to gather, exchange their thoughts, think about their day, but also maybe having a mentor there that might be able to assist with some potential mental health issues and, and just stressful day. And I thought, well, that's such a great idea. And then, that might be something that this group, those that may could be continuing on, and those that might be wanting to apply for next year, that, that is, how do we, how do we initiate that as well, yet continue with the, the great work was done. So, I commend all of you for the input. I know Clerk Treasurer, as I said, has some fun with the students as well.
Yeah, I just think that, um, it's, I'm reminded every time that I interact with, with all of you that there, there are so many different perspectives and so many different ways to approach issues, and I applaud your desire to, to do just that, to bring your creativity to the table. You are not shy about sharing what's going on in your heads, and that's wonderful because I think it takes every generation to get us to the solutions that we're gonna need. So, thank you for sharing who you are with us and giving us the opportunity to share who we are with you. Thanks.
Thank you. So, Paula?
I just wanna say thank you for being a good role model. There are other children and younger people that, that, you know, this is not their normal way of thinking, and you are making a difference. Well, you might be able to, you might not be able to see the difference you make, but you are making a difference. Congratulations.
Kelly?
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank you guys too for all your hard work. And I wanted to ask if a student was interested in joining your council, how would they go about doing that?
I think Mark might be able to answer that.
Yep. So, the students are chosen by the administration at the school. So, if they're interested in joining, they should talk to their, their building principal.
Mark, other comments?
Yeah, just final. I would like to echo my congratulations and thanks to the students too. It's been really neat working with them over the past year because everything that they've done is what they have done. Everything, you know, the mayor and I and Michelle and as well as the, the two school staffs are here only to support them, but all of the ideas, the issues have grown organically out of their thoughts and out of their minds, and then implementing the projects that they chose to work on this year has been solely done by them. We were only there to help guide them through the process. And so, I would like to congratulate them on another, another successful year. We look forward to doing it again next year. Appreciate the support of council as we move this project forward and also your kind thoughts. And then, I would also like to give Julie Everly and Jason Lindster an opportunity to say something if they would like to from the school administration perspective.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening. Like Mark said, I'm Jason Lindster. I'm the principal of St. Mary Catholic Central High School. I just wanted to thank Mark and Mayor Clark and Michelle Lavoy, first and foremost, for the invitation this year for SMCC and MCS to join this group. It was something that I saw in the community that was going on, and I was really excited to have our schools be participating in it, and it's been really great. Julie and the entire team from Monroe have been awesome to work with. It's really great to see our schools come together to really try to help impact our community. So, these, like you said, these students, they did it all themselves, you know. Really, I mean, we were there kind of just to be chaperones, and they did all the work. So, it's really on them. The Pop-up Palooza that, that I was mainly involved in, working with the students, you know, they're the ones that sought out people. They set up a marketing campaign. They did all the work. They've helped carry tables back and forth across the street. So, it's just a really testament to the young people in our community. And in a time where a lot of people around don't think much highly of our youth, it's great to see young people like this that are really setting a standard and setting an example, and hopefully showing the adults in our community that young people can make a difference. They can be involved in our community at a young age. I mean, we have students as young as, you know, fifth and sixth grade doing this, so it's really great to see. So, I thank you for all your support, and thanks to Mark and all the people from Monroe Public Schools for letting us hop on and be involved. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would also like to give credit to Holly Wallace, Holly Weaver, and Beth Kohler from Monroe Public Schools, in addition to Jason at SMCC and MCS, because a lot of work was done here at City Hall once a month, but there was also a lot of work done outside of City Hall, and they really did the job of trying to coordinate and liaise and work with the students when they weren't here at City Hall. So, I think they deserve a lot of credit and appreciation as well.
In addition to echoing what has already been said about the unity that this brings, I would just like to thank you for supporting education in this way as a city. So, we know to learn about citizenship, reading in a book is one, one avenue, but really being able to do some service learning and bring the concept of citizenship to your heart and to the hands of your community is a completely different experience for a learner. And we do not have term limits in our council, so I would like to recognize that we have some of our youth who, by choice, have invested for two years. So, they are our, our founding members, if you will. So, if you've been in the council for two years now, could you please stand? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. And then, we do have one member who is a graduate of the class of 2019. Kylie, so Kylie, if we could congratulate Kylie. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, I would just like to thank, again, the city of Monroe for supporting this and creating this venue for this type of education and real learning about community and what it feels to be part of something that is so, so much bigger than yourself, because there's a lot of fulfillment in that, and that's what these students have realized. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Julie. Mark, good. So, I guess, congratulations to all of you. I know moving on to, some are moving on, and hopefully some others we might see again next year and recruit some other, some of those replacements too. So, thank you all for being here. So, our work session as we move along, you're more than welcome to stay if you wanted to learn about the Telegraph Road Corridor, Labor Park, St. Mary's Gardens, and the fire station project in our work session here between now and 7:30. If not, we understand. That's why we had the earlier session to get all of you here. And unfortunately, not all the students could be here, but I know they wanna do. Some are also moving on after their year in school as seniors, but others also have other projects. So, thank you all. Look forward to seeing you in the fall. Thank you. Mr. Passu or Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna have Mark also do the introduction for the Telegraph Road Corridor Plan with our consultant MKSK. I've wrapped up the, the work that they've been involved with here for the past several months. So, Mark?
Before Mr. Cochran proceeds, I just wanna let you know that there is some technical difficulty, not with the clerk, not with my keyboard, but some things in the back room. So, they're working on that. If you see the TVs go off, or if somebody's listening at home and watching at home, and they're having a little trouble with seeing the presentations, we're working on some workarounds. So, just wanted everyone to be aware.
Thank you.
It's fixed now.
Thank you.
So, we're good. But if it happens again, you'll know we're working on it.
Man behind the curtain. Mark?
Mayor, Council. So, on that note, we do have MKSK here tonight to present the final draft of the Telegraph Road Corridor Improvement Plan. This was something that the city undertook as well with Monroe Township as well as Frenchtown Township over the past several months, thanks to our partners at SEMCOG, who funded the study, to take a look at the, the Telegraph Road Corridor from the area of Mall Road and Frenchtown Township to the north, down to Dunbar Road and Monroe Township. And so, we, we convened a task force that included planning commission members, staff, the, the municipal leaders from each township, as well as business owners and, and other interested parties to help guide this progress and this project forward, taking a look at all different facets that MKSK is gonna go through tonight. And so, on that note, Clerk, we, we will post the presentation that's being shown tonight, as well as the final draft when it's completed. But look forward to hearing what the final outcomes of the study were, as well as how we can implement those to improve the Telegraph Road Corridor. So, in the interest of time and not stealing thunder, I'll invite Brad Strater and Anne Marie with MKSK up to present the Telegraph Road Corridor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Council. With me this evening is Anne Marie Kirby, who's done a lot of work on the project, but hasn't had the chance to, to meet most of you. Here on behalf of Andrew Overbeck from MKSK, who also worked on this, and then our partners in the project, Manik and Smith, where they're traffic engineers. So, a lot of the access management, traffic section, and non-motorized, they assisted with. And Land Use USA, Sharon Woods provided the, the market study, market analysis as the basis. And as Mark said, we also wanna acknowledge and thank Monroe County for helping pull this together with Frenchtown and Monroe Townships, and especially to SEMCOG for providing some of the funding to make this all happen. So, you, I think you have a copy of the presentation in front of you and the full report. We've tried to get it down to about a, a quick, relatively quick summary of about 20 slides, but if there's specific things you wanna talk about, our idea- to talk about, um, our idea is because this is three communities, we've got a PowerPoint that has all the information, a report that has all of it in there and to tailor the presentation for each community. So, one of our last items on this project, well, once we have any final changes, is to give like a presentation, um, flash drive to each community that'll focus just on things in Monroe or in Frenchtown Township or Monroe Township. All of those will talk about the coordination and overall improvements that are desired. And feel free to interrupt me or Anne Marie, uh, at any time. The project, the plan is basically broken down into these chapters. So, the purpose of the study, some background information, existing conditions. So, just a reminder to you from when we met with you before, Manik and Smith went out and did traffic counts last fall when schools in session did, uh, analysis and so forth. So, we wanted to have realistic traffic numbers as part of that. And then Sharon Woods, Land Use USA looked at the market feasibility of things. So, we wanted this to be grounded in infrastructure and traffic and market realities. So, that, uh, we want to be ambitious but have it grounded in, in realities. And we have recommendations, corridor-wide recommendations. I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the, the transportation recommendations. And then working with the task force with input from, uh, the city and the two townships, we selected sites that we thought are, demonstrate how some of the principles of the plan could be applied to redevelopment of a site. Anne Marie will cover those. And then I'll kind of wrap up on some of the implementation and next steps for the city and the townships and the county. Um, this is the purpose of the study basically in response to a grant that SEMCOG provided was to look at opportunities along the corridor, make it, improve conditions for pedestrians, bicyclists, and people in vehicles. So, it's safer, has good transportation flow, and look at the market and look at ways to re-energize parts of the corridor that are, are looking a little bit tired and talk about the ways the three communities and the various agencies can work together and work with the private sector to make things happen. There's a lot of information in the plan on transportation. This is sort of a snapshot summary map. So, one of the things we looked at was, they call it the cross-section or the design of Telegraph Road from Mall Drive all the way down, uh, into Monroe Township. And the cross-section is the, the right-of-way or the area that is under control of MDOT jurisdiction. How many lanes? What would be the type of lanes? Where could we have pedestrian crossings? And what type of non-motorized facility, whether it be sidewalks or, or bikeways in the road or outside the road? So, I'm gonna cover a few of these. We have, um, six different sections, but I'm just gonna hit the highlights of some of the most typical ones. But you, you've got the plan with all of them. And then also, one of the things the council asked us to look at and the task force asked us to look at is, could we potentially have, transit has bus stops? Because having bus stops would help get, improve pedestrian facilities, get funding for improvements to pedestrian facilities and crossings to Telegraph Road. So, we've had some initial discussions with Lake Erie Transit. Um, these would all have to be sort of studied more and confirmed with them on their ridership. But right now, it's sort of a wave system where people can wave and get picked up by the bus. And the idea was, we think we can improve ridership if we have actually stops where people collect in amenities at those stops. And that's one thing council, last time I was here, asked us to look into more. Another change requested by, uh, council was to look at pedestrian connections from the neighborhoods to Telegraph Road. And so, in the plan, we've added those details and also the priorities of where those connections should be made. So, I'm just gonna hit a couple, uh, typical cross-sections. This is the northern part of the corridor up by Mall Road and Walmart. This is an area where Frenchtown Township has done a nice job of having that right turn-in, right turn-only driveway which helps reduce crashes and, and improves traffic flow. It also gives us a chance to have a median. So, one of the thoughts is people coming in off 275 and southbound heading into Frenchtown Township and the city are driving pretty fast still and that a longer median would help slow people down, kind of a sense of arrival into that part of Frenchtown and into the city of Monroe. It could be some landscaping there. And then you'll see on this cross-section on the right, that blue, it's just shown blue to make it more distinguishable on this image. But that would be a, um, two-way bicycle facility. So, people would bike outside of the, the Telegraph Road. That's safer with the volumes and speeds of, of traffic on Telegraph Road. And then we have on the opposite side, the sidewalk. And you'll see this kind of flips by sections because we don't have enough right-of-way to accommodate, uh, bike and pedestrian on both sides of the road equally. So, we've tried to put where we think the demand is better. So, this pathway that's shown on the east side, down by, um, Holiday in front of the former, uh, Lazy Boy Site, we then switch it over to the west side of Telegraph. And then that better connects with some of the parks and other things. So, that's kind of the, the other point. And then we're also showing here in kind of the far distance would be the place where there could be a pedestrian crossing and have a straight, uh, pedestrian crossing potentially if there are bus stops with bus shelters there to give people places when they get on and off the bus to be able to cross, uh, Telegraph more safely. And there's more detail in the plan, but it talks about flashing beacons or other things to help alert drivers that that's happening. You may recall in the last version, we had zigzag islands where people kind of, it's a zigzag crossing. Um, Manik and Smith and MKSK, we met with MDOT to get their input on these cross-sections and design. We've made some refinements to the plan. And one of them, MDOT found that those zigzags, um, are not really being used very well by people. They just keep walking straight across. So, they requested that we just show a straight crossing. So, that is a change, if you noticed that from the previous version. Then skipping down a few sections, you've all seen sort of the Lazy Boy section and other things. It's mostly five lanes, but at Lazy Boy is where we look at the, the pedestrian bikeway, the blue line crossing over to the west side of Telegraph. And one of the reasons to do that was to better connect with Custer Road and the park on both sides, west side of Telegraph there. So, this, uh, drawing, which we revised since the last meeting as well, shows the new city project to remove the pedestrian islands on Custer and do what's called a road diet to go from three lanes down to two and add bike lanes on both sides. And so, that'll be a nice connection to the Telegraph Road bikeway on the west side. And also, one of the things that the city or council asked us to look at is north of the Heating and Cooling Center, that excess property there, potentially there could be some green space or open space there to let people that are on Telegraph Road know that there's some green, um, just off Telegraph and kind of be an entry to that part of the city. So, that would be something the city would need to work on, perhaps get in the park and rec plan and work with the property owner. And that's just one concept. It could be even much smaller, using some of the excess property there. And then, one of the challenges is the bridge. And so, our task force with representatives, business, uh, representatives from the three communities and residents and, and staff and administrative and officials from the three communities, we're looking at how can we better get facilities across the bridge? And so, we showed two alternatives. One is sort of a short-term, working within the curbs, again with that bikeway, two-way bikeway on the west side of the bridge and somehow separating it from traffic to make it feel more comfortable. So, what we're showing there is bollards, kind of, if they're hit, they can just, they're, they can, uh, easily removed. You could remove them in the wintertime for snow plowing and so forth. MDOT would prefer to see a, a stronger separation between the bikes and the pedestrians and the traffic. And so, um, this might look a little harsh, but the idea is some kind of a separation because the width of the bridge is sort of limited. There's not a lot of room to do things there. But the idea is some kind of a concrete separation, could be something else, but some type of, a little bit more physical separation than just the bollards. That would likely have to be done if there's gonna be reconstruction on the bridge where we'd be moving the curb. So, that's why we have sort of a short-term and a longer term because right now, MDOT doesn't have any plans to make changes to the bridge. So, the, the drawing on the left would be fairly easy to implement now. And then, that's kind of an overview, really broad overview of transportation. One thing I neglected, I took it out of the presentation, uh, to shorten it, but we also looked at the former access management project that MDOT did with the three communities. And we tried to have a little bit more practical look at which driveways are actually reasonable to change or reconfigure. And so, there are access management recommendations there to consolidate some of the driveways, remove some of the driveways, move them farther from signalized intersections, and in particular, changing driveways that are close to where we want to have pedestrian crossings. So, that there's less vehicle conflict by those pedestrian crossings. So, that's sort of some of the transportation things we've looked at. I'm gonna turn it over to Anne Marie to talk about the, the catalytic or the redevelopment, uh, site opportunities that we see.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. So, there are six total catalytic sites for the corridor. Um, these were identified as redevelopment opportunities. And the first one I want to go over is in the northern section in Frenchtown Township. Uh, we selected this, uh, to propose an access road between La Salle Road and Stewart Road to really divert some of the traffic from Telegraph Road, but also to provide more accessibility to Meyer and to Walmart through all those sites. And then, this northern part of the area that's in yellow, it's really large enough to accommodate big box retail. And then also, uh, we could, it could be marketed for office or residential uses. Uh, the access road does propose to realign the Meyer driveway to the south. So, it's the section there that's highlighted in, uh, by the B. Um, but this area would be aligned with Huber Drive and further study would be required to make sure that, um, the right-of-way and property ownership, um, as well as the, the signal would be warranted at this location. And then, as you know, the Lazy Boy Site, uh, will be a critical component to redeveloping the entire corridor. I'm not gonna go into this too much because I know you guys have already seen a whole presentation on the sub-area plan. Um, but again, this is a huge 25-acre site, uh, lots of redevelopment opportunity to make this into a mixed-use, pedestrian-oriented, oriented development. So, moving south, this is, uh, Northell Lanes, the former bowling alley site. Uh, we chose this due to its, uh, site potential. It's very large. Uh, it's currently vacant. Uh, the concept plan shows, uh, a new building of about 80,000 square feet. And, uh, we're does, we're pushing the building, um, closer to Telegraph Road. Uh, we're showing it as a community-wide entertainment and fun center. So, there's a lot of different, uh, options here for, uh, potential uses that could be located here and really be a regional destination. Uh, access to the site, we're proposing that, uh, cars would then move more towards the rear so that pedestrian accesses would be a lot easier, uh, to the building. And you would really be right next to that multi-use pathway. So, the next one, this one we added, uh, recently, this is adjacent to Noble Avenue. Uh, we added this because it really provides that direct connection to the Custer Drive, uh, cross-section that we showed you earlier. Um, we're recommending to keep the existing buildings on the site in the back, but we are proposing, uh, to add two smaller, uh, buildings at the front, about 7,000 square feet each. And this would really help frame that entrance to, uh, to the site. And then we also show, it's a little hard to see, but we're showing, um, kind of outdoor dining seating to really draw people into, um, that area and attract, uh, visitors to the site. So, the next one is, uh, the Bull Drum location. And we had this, um, really want to keep the existing historic feel of the buildings here, but add outside enhancements. So, we add that mid-block crossing at this location, um, the public plaza on the triangle piece of the property, and also a bus shelter that's adjacent to the mid-block crossing. Uh, we envision a lot of different uses here. Um, you could do a microbrewery, community theater, uh, urban, um, lofts above retail, uh, lots of different options. And then the last catalytic site is, uh, 1200 Telegraph Road. And this is a pretty underutilized retail site, a huge parking lot. Uh, so, any new use that would go there, you wouldn't have to add more parking. Uh, one of the missing, uh, retail categories, uh, that we found was a, um, local hardware store. So, we think that an Ace Hardware or True Value Hardware could be located here. Um, and then, to help enhance the site, the proposed multi-use path is connected by, um, sidewalks and crosswalks into the entrance. And this is really, uh, a theme overall with all the catalytic sites is making sure that there's safe connections, not only along Telegraph Road, but into the sites themselves. So, all three communities and, uh, agencies, uh, like the county and SEMCOG, MDOT, and Lake Erie Transit will need to really work closely together to really help transform the corridor. And as part of this plan, we included this implementation section to kind of help guide you as you're making, um, these improvements to Telegraph Road. So, we're proposing, uh, that you adopt a zoning, uh, overlay to all the zoning ordinances for all three communities, um, to make sure that it's this consistently designed pedestrian-oriented environment. So, a few things that you could add into that zoning overlay, um, include signage. So, right now, as you know, Telegraph Road, there's a lot of visual signage clutter, uh, lots of large signs, different colors, different fonts. Um, it can be very confusing and, um, distracting to drivers. So, with signage, uh, in order to, to keep that from happening, to keep from interfering from traffic, um, we want to make sure that regulations include the number, size, um, types of signs, as well as just general materials that you can use, um, and the design of signs. And those are all important things to consider when creating the zoning overlay. Uh, the next one is access management. Uh, Brad mentioned that there was this 2005 access management study. What was included in that was a model, um, access management overlay zoning ordinance in the appendix of the document. Um, this is really a good starting point for incorporating, um, those additional regulations. It's not necessarily you have to adopt those particular ones, but it's important to kind of look at what's there. And I know that the city already has some access management standards and I think Monroe Township does as well. I'm not sure if Frenchtown Township does, but I looked and I couldn't find any. Um, but it's important to kind of start there and then add things like shared driveways to encourage them or require them in some cases to really increase safety, traffic flow, and, um, overall appearance of the corridor. And then, some additional uses may need to be permitted in the overlay, um, for the proposed uses that are marketable to those catalytic sites. And then, many existing buildings along Telegraph Road are set pretty far back. I mean, in some cases, this might be appropriate, but other cases, it's not. So, the standards could regulate that with stricter front yard setbacks or set maximum front yard setbacks, um, and also require buildings to be oriented, uh, so that pedestrians can see the entrance of the building. So, there might be some small changes, um, that you can regulate that would make a big difference along the corridor. And then, uh, parking really influences the overall built environment. So, standards that you could include in an overlay would be limiting parking to the side and the rear of the lot, um, institute a maximum ratio of parking spaces so that a youth can't come in and they just have a huge parking lot on their site, uh, encourage shared parking, and then also require, uh, bicycle parking too. And then, a major goal, uh, that we saw as part of, of the plans throughout all of the communities was that you wanted to increase the tree canopy along Telegraph Road. Uh, and then also, you know, just make it more visually appealing. So, you could require uniformly, um, planted trees along Telegraph and then also do things like permit sidewalk cafes in appropriate locations like the Bull Drum Site, uh, to make sure there's interaction between the public and private realm. So, now I'm gonna turn it over to Brad so he can kind of talk about how you might accomplish some of these things and who would oversee it.
Just to wrap up, so, zoning is one tool that can be used to help implement the plan. Working with the private sector, because a lot, these catalytic projects are all in their private ownership, even the area potentially with green space along Telegraph. So, there's a role for the private sector, a role for the agencies, working with Lake Erie Transit, working with MDOT and SEMCOG, um, working with Tim and Matthew at the county on some implementation, especially facilitating discussions with the private sector, getting information out to the developers. Uh, one of the ways to do some of these things and to help make some of the beautification improvements along the corridor that you asked us to be sure to include would be a corridor improvement authority. So, a corridor improvement authority is a tax increment finance district. It could be something that's established with all three communities where as new development comes in, the tax base generated by that, as you all know, maybe more for the audience, the tax base generated for that goes toward implementing, um, public improvements within the right-of-way. So, these pedestrian crossings and landscape improvements and bike improvements and changes of the bridge, all those things in the right-of-way, um, open space improvements could be facilitated in part through corridor improvement authority. I know I worked with the city manager in his last position to do a multi-jurisdictional corridor improvement authority on a similar type of corridor. And so, that's one of the tools that's available to you now that wasn't available a few years ago. We also look at, um, other funding resources. So, one of the advantages of getting these three communities to work together was getting the funding, um, awareness of SEMCOG. SEMCOG also has a program called Transportation Alternatives, which is non-motorized improvements and so forth. And they really, um, score highly, communities that are working together. So, even if the phase one is in Frenchtown or Monroe Township or in the city, if the three communities and perhaps the county or MDOT all put together, um, a unified application, you're gonna get more points from SEMCOG. There've been actually a couple of years in the last five that SEMCOG's full, you would think it's very competitive and they would have more requests than they had funding available. But my understanding is, two of the last three or four years, they have had extra money left over because there weren't enough credible applications. So, something to be aware of maybe before everybody starts catching on. Uh, SEMCOG is, is, uh, later this year supposed to have a tool, like a road diet and road design toolkit. And if you use their new methods and follow their toolkit, that will also give you more points for, for funding. So, we'll keep city administration and the townships and, uh, and Tim Lake all comprised if that funding becomes available. But just want to be aware of that funding resource. When we met, um, the Manik and Smith and MKSK team met with MDOT, they also noted that they've got what's called C-MAC funds or other funds that are available. for non-motorized and other improvements to make some of these changes. We were happy to say MDOT liked the cross-sections. There were a few. We showed them some of the early cross-sections that some of the task force members would like, and they felt that some of those changes are too radical right now for the speeds and volumes. But the things we've shown you in the final plan, they endorsed. They did have some tips, those mid-block pedestrian crossings, because the speeds and volumes are so high. MDOT has thresholds where they'll put those in that requires a fairly high pedestrian volume that we don't have out there probably right now. So, some of the ideas of these catalytic sites is to make the corridor more walkable and increase the pedestrian volumes. And sometimes, people aren't going to walk it until they feel comfortable that they can do it. MDOT agreed with the idea of going with bus stops that some of you suggested because they thought if you have bus stops and you can show that how many people are using the bus and are crossing the street randomly now, that that could help support getting mid-block pedestrian crossings and maybe those flashing beacons, even if the volumes aren't there today, to show that there is demand and desire to do that. And they also suggested looking at the Michigan State Infrastructure Bank Loan Program and other financing that is available now to fund some of these. So, there's not one big package of money to do all the right-of-way improvements, but it's have to be a combination of a variety of things over the years gradually. But again, working the city and the two townships working together will really, I think, raise your potential to get that work. And I guess our thought is maybe this corridor task force that's worked really well together should be retained and continue to coordinate development and grants and implementation, invite MDOT to participate in that because MDOT, I think, said they'd like to be a willing participant to help investigate and explore funding opportunities, seeing you all working together. And so, I think the momentum that the county and the city and the townships have put together with SEMCOG's assistance should be sustained. And then, I don't want to cover this too much, but there's several charts at the back. There are all these different implementation things just so they don't get lost. And we've listed the type of improvement, kind of the timing, who's responsible. A couple of things to put on there, the transit is working with the transit agency toward those fixed stops is something I think that would be something the task force might consider as more of a higher priority to at least keep the discussions going. Working toward a corridor improvement authority, as we talked about, I think there have been some exploratory discussions on that already. The sooner you get that in place, if you go that route, the sooner you're going to start getting the tax to make some of the improvements. Anne Marie mentioned the zoning. I think joint funding applications that are out there would be important, getting promotional materials out to the property owners. We had some property owners at our workshops and meetings that have seen these drawings, but I think sometimes just with a developer seeing these drawings, they get ideas and then they start wanting to do things even if it's not exactly how we've sketched it out. So, that would be another thing that we would recommend. And finally, adopting the plan as part of your, with Jeff Green and the planning department, if the city and the two townships adopt this corridor plan as part of your master plan, that adds a little bit more meat to these funding applications they might put in. So, that's our overview of the plan, and we'd be happy to, with Tim and Mark and Anne Marie and I, answer any questions you may have. Or if you have specific details or things, feel free to mark it up and get them to Mark before, our goal is to get a final plan out by the end of June.
Thank you, Brad. I'll see if council has any comments right off. Brian?
Yes, just had a question. You mentioned something about the Matt Urban Memorial Bridge. There may be some necessary reconstruction on the bridge, or what exactly were you intending and implementing on that?
Yeah, I might have not explained it very well. So, what we're trying to do is make an improvement that doesn't have to move the curbs. So, right now, the drawing on the left would all fit with it the way the curbs are. So, if you look on the left hand of the drawing, it's like a nine-foot path in the rail. So, ideally, you would have a 10-foot or 11-foot path, and you'd have more of a separation. So, the idea is if they're ever going into like repave or reconstruct it or move the curbs, not reconstruct the whole bridge. That's where I probably misspoke. It's just to reconstruct the pavement on the bridge, but then you would work toward a different cross-section that provides a little bit more room for the bicycling and then a better separation between the cycling and walking areas in the lane. So, just reconstruction of the pavement, not the bridge itself.
Thank you.
Other questions or thoughts? Andrew?
Yes, sir, thank you. You had mentioned that a flash drive with more detailed data would be provided to each municipality involved in the project. I noticed that we didn't cover any of the proposed drive closures specifically, and we didn't cover any of the trails, walking, non-motorized transport trails from the neighborhoods to the commercial districts. And I know my comments, at least regarding the plan, had a lot to do with those two specific points. So, I was wondering if those details would be in that.
They are. They're in the full document. And so, we have, some of them were shown on the catalytic sites at Anne Marie's, but some of the driveway closures close to those catalytic sites, others in the cross-sections were showing closures of driveways near some of those mid-block pedestrian crossings and to make the medians work. And then, it's very faintly shown on this, but there's a separate, if you see, it says "high priority," sidewalk neighborhood connections, and median priority. But on the full plan, you can see it better, and then they're enlarged. So, all that is in the full plan document. So, full plan document is about 70 pages, and this was about 20 slides out of the 70.
Something you could fit into a work session.
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Well, Brad, thank you. I think there's a lot of information, a lot of things to do. And I also want to make comment and recognition of the fact that I look in those presenters receiving, I see that there are planning commission members from all three jurisdictions that are in attendance here this evening. So, I appreciate that because I know that they've had some input, had some discussions as well as the committee as well. And our representative from SEMCOG is here as well. So, he'll talk to you about that money, though. I saw him cringe a little bit. I know what you're referring to, and it was some of those, as they've found out over the years, there were some revenues that kind of got non-expended and they recognized from all the projects, there were small amounts that added to a large amount, and that was last year's opportunities. There may be some similar ones this year. So, I know that, I look at the jurisdictions that are here, Monroe Township, Frenchtown Township this year, talking about opportunities to move forward with some additional projects just as this one did. Thank you very much.
Again, we'd like to acknowledge them. I don't think I have anything to say, but if any of them would like to add anything that I missed. Again, they'll have information specifically to their community so they can make a presentation of their planning commission and township board as well.
Great, thank you. I look forward to the next steps. I know council does as well, and how we collectively can make the Telegraph corridor in the appearance in which you've shown. And so, some great opportunities to improve the entire corridor. Mark, you would?
Just wanted to make one closing comment. I'd like to thank Tim Lake and Matt Vanasacker at the BDC because they really coordinated all three jurisdictions on behalf of this project and reaching out to all the stakeholders and also the task force. Because we couldn't have done this without their impact and their feedback on this project, particularly the business owners who took time away to meet a few times in the afternoon, but also on the bus trip that we did that took up half-day. So, significant sacrifice of their time to provide the input on this project, which was very valuable.
Very good. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Brad. Anne Marie. Vince?
If I may just add, just kind of follow-up in closing as well. I know from the city's perspective, we'll certainly take some of the recommendations, in particular, the establishing corridor improvement authority. I think the timing, what we have with, you know, the Lazy Boy Site redevelopment that seems to be headed in the right direction. The Nortel Lanes, there's going to be a redevelopment opportunity. We know the Monroe County Community Credit Union actually have groundbreaking in tomorrow morning they're moving with. So, there's a lot of opportunities to take advantage of a tax increment capture, if you will, to start implementing some of the recommended infrastructure improvements and start building that foundation. So, along with the other aspects of it is, you know, we are finishing up, I know Mr. Green is close with the zoning ordinance, and we actually adopted that. We're looking at that by corridor, if you will. And so, this would be fit in nicely to that. So, we'll be following up and certainly working with both Frenchtown and Monroe Township as well to look at that overlay district and how we might be able to coordinate that effort as well, so.
Very good. Thank you. So, our next item.
Next item we have is Labor Park Design. Mr. Mark Russell with Russell Designs been working with the project, and part of it is, is just to give you an update where we're at with that, and we're ready, pretty much ready to get going here soon. So, Mark?
Vince, council members, Mark Russell with Russell Design, 114 Raisin Street in Northville, Michigan. We're here to give you a little bit of an update. I know we were before you a few months back and took your comments and manipulated our plan to incorporate some of those. It's been a pretty big collaborative effort, not only with city staff, but also with the agencies, in particular DTE. We do have, what you see before you there are, or is, an existing conditions plan. You all are aware of the properties south of Second Street that have been purchased by the city. And part of this plan, as we presented to you previously in the master plan, that was completed by another firm, did not incorporate these parcels since they weren't obviously owned by the city. So, since that has become a reality, we've incorporated the property south of Second Street to into the park, and you'll see that before you if you haven't already peeked ahead. But essentially, that area was critical, I think, in really developing a plan and in a whole piece rather than just isolated piece separated by Second Street. Part of this plan, as well as represented in the previous master plan, Second Street will be closed, vacated between Winchester and Eastchester. And that also allows for some continuity within the park and connectivity of the community gardens that are in the southwest corner of the park, basically fronting Winchester and Second Street currently. The library and the community center will also be, are also important uses within this site that will incorporate, I think, nicely in the plan you'll see before you in a moment. As I mentioned, working with DTE has been significant. There are some existing utilities, utility poles, that we wanted to remove from the park so that we would obviously have a nice place for kids to play and not have the interruption, visual interruption and that canopy interruption of the utility lines. So, DTE has been so kind as to reroute those utilities that actually penetrate the park from Winchester south to Eastchester. And those utilities will then be located or relocated from the corner. There's a significant pole at the corner of the, I guess it's the northeast corner, northwest corner, excuse me, of Winchester and Second. There's a pole that has to remain, and from that pole, everything will be routed to the south. And then, from the residence that's just to the south of the community gardens, the utility lines will be directed to the south, pardon me, to the east, and then reconnect to a utility pole that essentially is at the entrance, if you will, of the alleyway, which we're going to preserve the alleyway with, you'll see in a moment, I'll go quickly through that. I know you guys have a busy schedule. So, advance, I guess it's this one? Yeah. So, quickly, just the demolition plan, much of what I've just spoke of. Second Avenue will become vacated, which is the area basically separating the two parcels. The parking lot that's to the east, pardon me, the west of the community center will be removed and will become parkland. And then, the area surrounding the library and the community center will be enhanced with pedestrian walkways, landscaping, bicycle parking, as well as some site amenities and site furniture. The area to the south of Second Streets, fronting Eastchester Street, will be removed. The lawn area will be removed. A portion of the alleyway will be removed. And there are some existing foundations that we've discovered there, and we will be removing those, obviously. The geotechnical report has indicated that there is fill within those, so we assume that there's a basement of some sort, if it's a crawl space or a full-depth basement. But what we've illustrated in our documents, construction documents, is that they will, contractor will assume they're eight feet deep as a basement. So, we'll have, should have a pretty solid number there. And then, we do have some visible foundations exposed that are illustrated on the document before you. Any questions thus far?
Please continue.
So, the next plan is the illustrative drawing of what we have proposed, and this is following certainly lots of input from staff as well as you folks. And we think it's a pretty exciting plan, and we think it affords a lot of opportunity for kids, families, to not only recreate within the park, but also visit the community center and the library more safely and more directly. You can see that, obviously, the area that I just spoke of, the lawn area with the foundations for the homes, has been removed and now becomes a parking lot of about 42 cars, including some handicap-accessible spaces. And that is about the same amount of parking that we had to the west of the existing community center. So, we didn't lose any parking. We gained a few accessible spaces, which weren't really illustrated on the current parking lot and surrounding the entire facility at the library and the community center. We've also, currently, the parking that's to the east of the community center parks in the road. So, we have inset that a bit with some parallel parking along that area for safety and ease of circulation for passersby, not only pedestrian circulation, but also vehicular circulation on Eastchester in both directions. The library entrance has been enhanced. We have an accessible route there of coming directly from the parking lot and into the existing entrance to the library. We've highlighted the surrounding building or the edges of the building with some ornamental trees and some evergreen hedge material. The plaza to the east of the community center is much the same. It's mostly hardscape, but we've incorporated some landscape in there and some seating opportunities that basically flank a colorful area in the center, basically aligning itself with the front entrance to the community center. And we will also have three flagpoles in that bed as well, American flagpole, Michigan, state of Michigan flagpole, and certainly the Monroe flag with logos and what have you there. We've highlighted that area with a couple of landscape areas. One is a raised bed, and the other with the four trees in it is a lawn panel. So, if somebody wanted to casually sit beneath the trees and shade, they could do that. It's surrounded by paving, much like it is today. We're taking all the existing paving out and replacing it with new concrete paving. You can see, maybe you can't, but there's some bicycle parking to, on the north face, or pardon me, yes, the north face of the library, just to the south edge of the plaza. There are some existing utilities, sort of back in that little crotch between the two buildings, that we will screen with an evergreen hedge, necessary utilities that need to remain. The park itself is entered via pedestrian, bicycle, what have you, at the current, we'll say, Second Avenue entrance. We'll have a sign there that'll highlight the location of the park. And then, also, a parking, or a handicap accessible, certainly, but an accessible location at the northwest corner of the park, mainly addressing any residents coming from the adjacent community. The alleyway that fronts the, or that is on the north side of the entire park is our, really is our edge of, or a limit of work. We will incorporate a portion of that in this project. We will also ask the contractor to provide us with a alternate price to remove and replace the existing asphalt alleyway. It's in pretty bad shape, so we're going to try to improve that and improve its drainage as well. Adjacent to the, does this have a pointer on it? It's got to. I don't know where it is.
It doesn't.
It does not? Okay. All right. There is a, there is an access drive. Oh, thanks. Who's got the controls?
Me.
Awesome.
Where you'd like it to go.
Right there, that's good. All right, so there's going to be a pavilion right there, probably a 20, 25-foot pavilion that will be open-air. We're not going to, we're not anticipating any grills or anything like that in this park, but it's an area that'll have a couple picnic tables beneath it, so allow for another opportunity for families to visit as well as maybe providing some revenue to this Parks Department for renting that facility. To the north of that is a little spur of a walk that connects up with the alleyway. So, if somebody needed... So if, if somebody needed drop off material, supplies, or perhaps a person of physical limit and limitations, we could certainly provide some access there as well. The, so we've got a couple of different walking systems or pathway systems through there, they're all concrete. The dot in the middle of the park, the blue dot, is the water feature. Councilmember Mike Eichelangeli likened it to a fire hydrant, it's not quite that, but it's, it's going to be basically a spray feature. We're, we're working with a vendor right now and anticipate having some documents available shortly. But those are flush mounted jets that will provide water during the appropriate times and seasons, and all controlled mechanically and with computerization to provide the amenity, provide the fun, but then in the wintertime, it's flush and there's no toys, if you will, that are poking up, that are potential vandalism opportunities. The dark area, the, the terracotta area is a playground, we're working again with a vendor, in fact, meeting her tomorrow to solidify plans for that playground. There'll be an accessible use, or accessible playground along, along with some swings, and accessible swings and, you know, physically able bodied swings as well. The buffer along the north side, the dark green trees or evergreen trees being proposed, had some comments back from the Parks and Rec Department that will certainly incorporate. There's a little bit of concern about safety and security, so we want to talk a little bit about that and might modify that a tiny bit. We know that the park, or the land to the immediate north of the park is owned by the city, adjacent to the credit union, and we will use that parcel for staging and lay down area for the contractors during construction. So they have an area where they can come and go as they wish without disrupting any construction processes and operations within the park itself. All the green is lawn, essentially. There might be some manipulation of some contours, we're modifying, or not modifying, but finalizing our cut and fill balance calculations for that, so we'll know how much dirt comes out of this and how much we have to dispose of. Currently, we just have the area where the evergreens are on the north side on top of a, a small berm. The other areas will all have, all be isolated, we'll, we'll call them isolated green areas that are surrounded by paving, all have drainage within them, so everything's going to drain internally, and then all be connected to a new storm system that is being proposed that will connect into the existing city system. The, that's about it. Oh, one other thing. The, the dumpster area on the northwest corner of the, of the community center has been modified a bit because of the park and the way the park was configured. We've included a retaining wall that jets out toward the alleyway that, that allows for the, the dump trucks or garbage trucks to pick up their, pick up the garbage a little bit easier, and, and also provides us an opportunity to use that as a retaining wall to berm up against, for the landscape feature. I'm happy to answer, any questions? Oh, one other thing, maybe I can mention is timing. We have just received comments from city staff, the water department, the engineering department, and Parks Department on an owner review package, we call it about a 90%. We anticipate incorporating those comments and finalizing those and submitting those for bid, probably the middle to the end of this month. The problem we have is timing, from a bidding climate standpoint, where it is a nasty time to bid. So what we are proposing, and what we will propose in our bid documents, is that, you know, the contractor would have the opportunity certainly to start earlier, but our start date probably is going to be projected around the end of August, and even maybe the first of September. And that's in an effort to, to try to capture some of the contractors, general contractors that are busy with school projects and completing school projects. We liken this very much to the type of work and those types of contractors. We'll work with the contractor, also, what, in the bid documents, we'll, we'll document and illustrate what we think would be a construction season up to probably a November timeframe, depending upon what happens with Mother Nature. And then whatever doesn't get completed before the snow flies, we'll finish in 2020. Any questions?
Joe?
The entire park and walkways, and particularly the playground, will it be wheelchair accessible?
Yes.
Everything?
Yes.
I think you may have answered this already, but I'm just going to ask it anyway. The necessity of the alley being there, obviously, I didn't realize that you had the dumpsters right off the alley there, just behind the community center. Is that basically the only thing it's serving, is those dumpsters?
They're also, so on the northeast corner of that building, there's some parking, right adjacent to the community gardens that are near the, the tax business. And then it also serves as, as some drop off for people coming in and out of the, the community center. But I think too, it's, it's, basically, the way that things are working now with this, with this proposal is, I think it's going to provide a very important emergency access route and fire and safety.
Thank you, sir. A question about the water feature briefly. We've essentially surrounded it with trees, and in the fall, that's just going to be a horrible mess. I was wondering if we anticipate that to gum up the works at all, and then what the maintenance cost is anticipated to be for that water feature?
We're working with the vendor on that, we'll have that back to you, exactly what that is, and that actually asked that the very same question. And I, I don't know that we're going to have a huge issue, I know that the drain for that water feature is in the center. Everything slopes at approximately 2% to the center. There may be, yes, some leaf drop and what have you that has to be mitigated. Certainly the timing and the, the whole scheduling and what have you of that water feature and would be critical, you know, to understand. I'm not sure exactly what the operation schedule of that will be, the water feature itself, but there, there will be some maintenance, absolutely. What that cost is, is, as far as surface level of maintenance, where you got to make sure the drain is, is operable.
Like the, the plumbing and if, if it's going to have to be cleaned out once a year or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't, it doesn't get, it doesn't, there's a strain mechanism so that it doesn't get into the guts of the system. Everything is, all the energy components and electrical components, mechanical components are all in the center of the play feature and, and concentrated within about a two-foot volume, below grade.
Okay.
The jets, yes, Mr.?
What are the dimensions of the water feature?
It's 44 feet from, basically, the, the blue dot is 44 foot diameter.
Thank you.
Other questions? John?
Maybe this is for the city administrative staff. The community garden that's on the upper left of the drawing, is that city-owned property? Are we, as part of this project, going to provide water source to that?
I believe there's already water provided to that source.
Water source?
Yeah.
It's on the east, pardon me, the west side? Give that, give me that hand. It's all the way up there, you see those two dots to the left, or my left, right? There's two dots just between the, the gardens at the very top of that document. And that's a, it's a 5/8 inch water, water line that comes in to serve a yard hydrant for those, for those gardens.
Good. See any other questions? Kelly?
Alley, the alley on the side of where the community, that comes between those two parcels where the community gardens are? Did you say that that alley would be partially closed, or were you talking about the alley to the east?
If you see the tree, the lime, lime colored tree, chartreuse colored tree at the park, where the parking lot is, and just to the south of that, we'll call it south, but it's actually east, so just drop your cursor down a tiny bit. So right, right between the tree and where that cursor is, there's, there's turf paving, okay, which is, which is an injected molded paver, you don't see, it'll be covered with, with turf. And then to the immediate south of that, there's removable bollards. So you can't access the alley, you can from an emergency standpoint, but you cannot as a public, you know, to access the alleys. Okay. Thank you.
Just kind of trying to figure where the alley, how far and where it went, that answered the question.
Yeah, yeah. Essentially right behind that garage.
Mm-hmm. Other questions? Very good, I, I think, you know, look, yes, John?
I'm really concerned about the bidding environment, what's going on right now.
Me too.
Any thought about when you put the bids out, having a alternate or a deduct if the contract was to be bid now but let, construction wouldn't start until April? Somebody would bid it basically because they would then end up with maybe the potential of having 2020 backlog?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, it's bidding, well, you know, Mark, bidding this, this time of year is extremely dicey and could, it could, it could increase the cost.
Certainly, certainly what I don't want to do is burden the city with additional funding, you know, to send something else out for bid. I agree with you, I think the bidding climate is sticky, I think we have to be careful. I'm not certain, I've not talked to any contractors, I'm not certain we can extend that construction period until June, because between fall and, and spring, that's when all the prices of materials start to do their thing. So I'm not sure that we'll be able to secure a number unless we put a cap on how much those particular pieces or products could increase, which we've done before as well. So we, we've got to be really careful in how we, how we document that, and certainly we want to follow protocol and charter of the city and make sure that we're, we're following the rules. But I agree with you, I mean, it's, it's going to be sticky, and that's why I think we're, if we can get somebody who is looking for work in the fall, you know, we know that we ran into a big deal last year where we tried to get stuff done in the fall, and everybody was busy because the weather was crazy and closing in quickly. But if we can, if we can bid it out and, you know, we can, we can try to maybe create an alternative to do that, and we can, we can look at that opportunity. Thank you.
Good question. So there's, I'll just make brief comment, there's much I like in this, I think that it speaks to what the council was talking about, you know, from the, from the park side, the youth and the community side, the reconfiguration of the Second Street, one item I think is really, kind of just transforms the existing building in the entrance to the library and the, whether the tree shrubs it or shrubs it around there, and enhancing and making the entrance to the ALCC better. I mean, the building is there, it is existing, how we can just make that nice in, with this plan, I think is excellent, so.
Thank you.
Just want to make that comment, I really think it makes the entrance to what the library is and lets the community recognize and hopefully will enhance additional use to. Yeah, John?
Loretta's here. We have tot lot program down there?
We don't right now.
We, yeah. Will we, once, if this project is built?
One of the things we're trying to take into consideration with tot lot is there are areas around there that are now offering free lunch and part of getting the free lunch, you should go there all day. So we had a tot lot and it closed because we didn't have the kids. So as long as the climate would welcome it, sure. I think with the water feature that we, I think kids may want to come to tot lot.
Those opportunities, yeah, definitely those opportunities, I think.
DTE, the, the community lighting program, and trying to incorporate pedestrian-level lighting, not only in, along the pathways, but also within the parking lot, so that'll be an added feature as well.
Excellent, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, great, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Well, Vince, I know we're about quarter after, and I know there's a couple more items, and we might lead over, but I know we can at least get something else done.
I'm going to jump one here and go to the fire station budget. Just give city council an update, and in part tonight, I'll be back up at our last work session, you had a presentation with Chief White and Captain Foley regarding some requests for hoses, fire hoses and nozzles and other equipment that we can fund out of the bond proceeds. And then tonight, you have on your agenda approval of the hoses and the nozzles, but authorizing up to $50,000 from the bond proceeds for this project. And, and part of the reason for handing this out is we updated where we are with the project. As you look down at the bottom in the far right column on the first page, you know, we got a little, just under $80,000 contingency. I say that because we've added two items, the $50,000 in, in equipment costs and the fiber optic connection that we still need to take place, that we're currently working on to, to do that. But other than that, we're pretty, we're very confident that we're well within the project budget that we have for this. You know, even in the revenue side, Mr. Sell was telling, we, we've already hit our $75,000 interest earnings for the project, and so the essence of it is I'm comfortable and confident with what we're recommending related to the equipment item tonight. And then at the next meeting, we'll be back with the city council with a budget amendment for the project, as well as a handful of other amendments to, to close out the fiscal year.
Your honor? You're showing the $50,000 under the fire department equipping cost on the budget, so it's in here already?
It's already in there.
And you're projecting around 80, so far, with all that?
We still look.
Around $80,000 contingency remaining, okay?
And as Vince said, there's on the, item on the agenda, but he wanted to review this, so we understood the financing. Vince, other?
Patrick, can we get this done in five? I think we can do it.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. Good news is you've already seen this back in October, so.
That's one minute gone.
All right. Way too. All right. Next slide, please, or do I have the clicker? Sorry. Whoops. All right. So basically, I'm going to be coming to you in two weeks, hopefully, I still don't have the proposal from the Spicer Group, but we're looking at a comprehensive design on the, well, calling it St. Mary's Gardens subdivision, the portion of a basically sort of north of Hendrix Drive, was the area, it was built, built in the 1960s, the northern parts of it drained in the Mason Run Drain, and south part goes to Ives Drain, which is a lot smaller. We've mentioned this before, it has experienced frequent and severe subsurface flooding events, which is basically basement flooding, things like that. It's complicated interplay between the footer tiles and sump pumps connected in a lot of cases to the sanitary sewer, and lack of storm sewer capacity, lack of storm sewers in a lot of areas. Council way back in 2015 funded a concept study on this one, and we looked at some options, but they were pretty high level, bird's eye view kind of stuff. Spicer Group returned with recommendations, we actually remanded it back to them, had them look at a 25-year design instead of a 10, so I've got some costs associated with that. Some of the challenges in the area, we focused on these before. Basically, the land runs away from Mason Run Drain, but the storm sewers go to Mason Run Drain, so you can see that starts to become a pipe conflict as you get farther and farther away from the drain. It's always been flat, the soils have been poor, we got a lot of heavy clay, so it's not like water can just disappear easily. A lot of the roadways in the area, like John L. and McCormick, actually don't have storm sewer at all, route down to the ends and then pipe over to Rosler and Lavender Streets. The other roadways that do have storm sewers, they're pretty much undersized for the development. There's no rear yard drainage at all, I'm sure there's a lot of people in that area that have had problems right now, along with everybody with the rain we've had. And like I mentioned, the majority of the homes are suspected to have some kind of clear water discharges to the sanitary sewers, and then those in turn cause sanitary discharge charges during heavy events. The other thing that adds to the complexity here is we've got a significant number of tri-levels in the area, which means the base, the effects of basement flooding are even more pronounced than they might be in your average neighborhood, so let's just say it's a combination of a lot of poor factors. I showed you some pictures up here again that are of interest here. That's actually the pipe connection where it comes into Mason Run Drain on Lavender Street. You can see all the mud in the bottom of it, that's because the last section of pipe is laid backwards, because the runs come in deeper than the bottom of Mason Run Drain. So you've got about a foot that the water has to jump, so that means basically a foot of mud in there all the time. As I mentioned, you drain away from the, the land goes away from it, so at the end, the south end of the basin that goes to Mason Run Drain, you're 1,600 feet away, and the ground has lowered four feet from the top of bank, which means that your pipes, if you tried to put storm sewer in, would basically be poking out of the ground at that point. So we've got to look at some creative, creative options here. If we were to If we were to fit it with this existing system, all of those new lines would be shallower than we'd like to have, they'd probably be flatter than we'd like to have. And then the residents, of course, this comprehensive effort to connect to those storm sewers before they really realize that benefit. So as I mentioned at the bottom, retrofitting the new lines to the existing system yields less-than-ideal results, and I think that's probably a good summary there. The report Spicer Group gave us way back in 2015 was, obviously detention is going to be necessary. They showed some backup systems where the water would just kind of come to a certain level and sort of stabilize throughout the neighborhood. One of those would be James and Hendrix Park. Recommended the addition of those new lines on McCormick and John L. to provide each house an opportunity, a place to connect their storm water. But the current system, as they evaluated, was only about a two-year design, so that's not cutting it with some of our larger events. Even a 10-year design would still result in some street and rear yard, I call it nuisance flooding, that's the things that kind of appear in heavy storms but disappear shortly. That cost at the time was $675,000 roughly, in $2,015. I'm sure that's quite a bit more today. A 25-year design would require upsizing everything, detention at both James and Hendrix Park and actually building something on the SSIHM property, that was looking about $1,004,000. Where are we heading? We haven't had any major activity since the Spicer Group report in 2016, but we met with them about three weeks ago. We asked them to scope a proposal for us. We did set aside $50,000 in this year's CIP, and the administration sort of earmarked, called about $450,000 roughly in personal property tax that we weren't sure we were going to get, and that's, that's coming through, so we're going to partially fund the construction. Obviously, as we, you saw the numbers, it'll be more than that to complete. So we need to figure out where the rest of the money is going to come from. We are hoping to do something for 2020 construction. Obviously, it's too late for, for '19 work, there's a lot of study needs to happen. We may consider some hybrid options. We've talked about a stormwater pump station. I'm not a huge fan, except that it's one way that you could actually put the pipes in with the proper slopes, with proper depths, and then have them come to some kind of common detention area that can be pumped. That way, you're not getting in those pipes that are laid backwards with the mud that we're constantly having to clean out. We would like to continue using Spicer Group, that's why we did ask them sole-source that. They've done a lot of work for the Monroe County Drain Commissioner's Office, they did the drain cleanup plans for Mason Run, they did the initial studies for us. So we are recommending, and we probably will in two weeks, that you award the proposal to them. Based on our best guess, city manager and I, we're thinking it's probably going to come in around $100,000. We've got to top, perform topographic surveys on all the streets, and that work alone is going to be significant, so. Also mentioned, some areas, streets need reconstruction. John L. is a mess. It's been a mess for several years, but we don't want to reconstruct the road until we actually fix the stormwater detention or drainage problem.
And so the purpose of this is, again, remind the council what we talked about in late October, when we went through a number of projects, but we're ready to go forward with it. We did get, you know, the funding that we were hoping to get through the personal property tax, which was kind of somewhat uncertain based on the formula change, and so we're comfortable going forward with the design and looking at potentially some work in 2020, and again, probably applying another portion of that personal property tax to get us closer to what we need for the ultimate funding. So I know in the interest of time, just wanted to let you know, this will be back on your agenda more than likely at the next meeting on the 17th.
Thanks, Patrick.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince. I know that we're at our time. There was one item that came up this week regarding another SEMCOG planning assistance program that the county is kind of champion, but looking for partners, and I'll have that discussion. It's with Frenchtown, of course, Monroe Township, Frenchtown Township, schools and others. I'll bring that up in our, in my comments during the session, because looking, they're looking for support, and I'll, I'll explain that later. So with that, if there's no other comments, I'll close the work session. We have about five minutes before the council meeting.